I now call the Huntsville City Council meeting to order. If all that are able to and would like to, please rise for the invocation led by Frank Broyles followed by the pledge allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 400.
Let us unite in prayer. Without a doubt civic life is your gift and governing that life is our responsibility. We do thank you, great God giver of life, for entrusting us with public goods and services and the commonwealth of people and institutions in the city that we call Huntsville. In our common life in this city, we seek tonight opportunities and avenues to strengthen this city. And our prayer is that in this seeking, we will be deliberate and act well. We will respect differences, honor the diversity but seek the common good, listen with care, speak with boldness but not with contention, and join together in furthering what is best for the most, that we understand to be the common good. This is our hope and this is our pledge and we offer it in the confidence of your unfailing love. Amen.
Troop 400.
Color guard, post. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, dismiss.
Good job. Thank you Reverend Broyles, thank you Troop 400. The minutes from the February 13th regular meeting and the February 17th special meeting have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Coach Patterson to come forward, we have a number of young people who have done great things for this community and we're going to start off with a couple that a couple who we know their parents on. So Coach, would you tell us about it?
Yes, sir. Mayor and members of the council, it's my pleasure to tonight introduce to you two state champions from our winter sports program. First, I'm going to ask Peyton DeMost to come forward. And Peyton is the Class 6A, 220-pound state champion from Huntsville High School. And of course, that event was held right here across the street at the Von Braun Center hosted by the Huntsville Sports Commission. Peyton, you want to tell, what was your final record this year?
Fifty-eight and four.
Fifty-eight and four, so that's quite an accomplishment there. And have you finalized any plans yet for college?
No, sir. I'm taking a visit to several places.
Okay. I know he also was an excellent football player too, so I'm glad you took after your mother and you did quite well. Some of y'all don't know Peyton's dad was a former player at Alabama, so he's got some good genes there. Congratulations to you. Once you wait right here and we'll get Terrence up here next. Terrence, if you'd come forward. Terrence is also an excellent football player at Columbia High School. He's a junior, but he's here tonight because he is the state indoor 5A long jump champion. So he won the state championship in Birmingham just a few weeks ago. And how long was your jump, your winning jump?
Twenty-one feet, eight inches.
Twenty-one feet, eight inches, okay. So that's quite a leap there and I know he's a good football player too. I happen to know his dad from way back as well, when I was an assistant coach at Johnson High School. Coach's dad, he's also Terrence Humphrey, sure is. So he's got some good genes as well. So we've got two state champions here right at this point. We've got some other young guys coming up here in a few minutes, so congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Peyton, if you'd come back up and do a single leg takedown on Mayor Battle, we'd appreciate it. We have a resolution congratulating the Boy Scout Troop 400 for their 25 years of outstanding service to the community. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second?
A motion by Dr. Shauer, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Dr. Shauer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas the city council and mayor are prized of the 25th birthday of Boy Scout Troop 400 led by Scout Master Albert F. Farrar Senior and sponsored by Hall B. Bryant Junior and Jim Basden of H.C. Blake Company. Several adult scout leaders and varying caring citizens of Huntsville have developed and helped develop a youth development program for the youth of Huntsville Public Housing and the surrounding low-income areas through Boy Scouts of America Troop 400. In 1988, the troop was registered by the Boys and Girls Club at the request of Hall Bryant Junior, a boy member who had paid for the charter. Mr. Farrar volunteered to be the Scout Master but found the troop inactive and in need of a new sponsoring organization. Mr. Bryant wanted Troop 400 for search homes and made the decision his company, H.C. Blake, would sponsor the troop and pack. The program was watched closely and tailored to meet the special needs of the children it served. And the Troop 400 record of developing leaders is noteworthy. Troy Green served as president of the student government at Lee High School and went on to be vice president of the student government at his university. Eagle Scout Troy Green was selected to present the national state of Boy Scouts of America to the president of the United States and Joint Session of Congress. Troy's eye-catching Eagle Scout leadership served projects that consisted of bringing together agencies that provided youth development services and at-risk students that needed those services played a role in his selection. He is now the Scout Master of Troop 400 and doing outstanding job. Javon Ragland was class president and went on to become student government president at Lee High School. Both credit their success to the leadership training they received from Boy Scout Troop 400. The troop holds elections every six months to give more boys an opportunity to develop their leadership skills. The program caught the attention of the mayor and the city council and was recognized in two city resolutions. On three separate occasions, Mr. Farrar was designated a national distinguished Scout Master and on each occasion was called to the national meeting of Boy Scouts of America in Chicago, Dallas-Fulworth, and Orlando to explain the successes of the program in a hard-to-serve area. On each occasion, Mr. Farrar explained the success of Troop 400's program was due to the efforts of dedicated volunteers with the support of the kind citizens of the city of Huntsville, Alabama. Some of the many services provided by the Troop 400 enrichment program for all youth in the community, not just those who participate in scouting include computer labs with limited internet access, tutorial for all grade levels, access to HomeWorm Alabama website, financial incentives to improve their grades, financial assistance for school field trip, and other activities, free school supplies, free haircuts and grooming trips, local, state, and national tours such as the Capitol and Montgomery of Washington, D.C., leadership training, work introduction training, community service projects, improvement in writing skills. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, that we wish the members and leaders of Boy Scout of America Troop 400 a happy 25th birthday. We wish to recognize Club Pack 400 and Venture Crew 400 as extensions of Boy Scout Troop 400, tried and proven character development program, and express appreciation for the enthusiastic and continual support of Mr. Michael Lundey, Director of the Huntsville Housing Authority, as new Scout Master Troy Green assumes leadership and Mr. Albert Farrar assume his role as Scout Master Emeritus. We wish them both every success in all of their future endeavors. This document that we're going to present is signed by the mayor, Mark Russell, Bill Kling, John Oshasky, Will Coverd, and yours truly, Richard Shauer Senior. At this time, I'm going to ask representatives from the change, let me have that microphone. I'm going to ask Troy's not here tonight. Oh, is he? Earlier, they told me you wasn't here. Troy, come up. Troy? I've got a bunch of stuff here I'm going to give you. Our executive administrator, Pearlis Camper, said Pam Morgan is here. Would you come up? Is Michael Lundey here tonight?
Yeah, we'll represent for him.
She's doing two things tonight, okay.
Represent for Mr. Bassen.
Okay. And so what we have here are the resolutions. These are extra copies for you. We want to give, Mayor, would you come over here? It has just been a delight to see what Club 400 has done when you organized, when Mr. Farrar was leading, and then this young man and young men after young men have come on the scene to make us proud to be a member of this Huntsville community and the things. And when I saw this young man on national TV, the president's opportunity in the Congress, young man, you made all of us proud. Troy, you made us proud. I'm going to give these certificates to the mayor and he will present them to you all.
And let me say one other thing. Troy, he's not very big, but he's one of ours. He's one of our police officers out on the streets. He keeps us safe and does a great job in this community. We tried to fatten him up as he went through cadet school. It just didn't work, but he is one of our fine officers and we are very proud to have you on the streets representing the city of Huntsville too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Troy, we're going to ask you, as we asked the council members and others, to stand and acknowledge our appreciation to you and Club Scout 400, Troop 400. Now, I should know better, John, being an Eagle Scout, Explorer Scout, back in those earlier days, to call you a club when you should be called a troop 400 and Club Pack 400. If you go down to that end where our attorney is, we just shake hands, just leave this right here. We want to just touch you. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Okay.
You make us proud. You make us proud.
We're excited, buddy. We're going to move for a resolution congratulating Pastor TC Johnson upon his 30th pastoral anniversary celebration, St. Luke Christian Church, to be held at the Von Braun Center on March 7, 2014. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
A motion by Dr. Shauer, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just read a couple of excerpts from this resolution for Pastor TC Johnson. Whereas the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama are apprised that Pastor TC Johnson's 30th anniversary celebration at St. Luke Christian Church will be held on March 7th through the 9th, 2014. And whereas, the 30th anniversary celebration begins on March 7th, 2014 with a grand gala banquet at the Von Braun Civic Center, North Hall, 7:15 PM with special guest Ricky Smiley and Vicki Winans. March 8th, 2014 will be the family fun day on the campus of St. Luke Christian Church at 2:00 PM. And on March 9th, 2014, worship services will be held at 8:00 AM and 11:00 AM. The guest minister will be the gospel-renowned Bishop Rance Allen of Toledo, Ohio, and special music by the McKinnon Gospel Choir of Clearwater, Florida. And whereas, Pastor Johnson is a graduate of Athens State University and Beeson Divinity School, Sanford University in Birmingham, Alabama, Pastor Johnson has served as the leader of the St. Luke Christian Church at Cavalry Ministries for over 25 years. Under the hand of God, through the leadership of Pastor Johnson, the church has witnessed the most progressive increase in the history of its existence. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, that we congratulate Pastor TC Johnson on his 30th anniversary at St. Luke Christian Church and extend very good wish in all future endeavors. And we will present this at the banquet on March 7th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now back on our agenda, we have a resolution congratulating Fire Marshal Joe L. Jordan upon his retirement after 38 years of dedicated service to the Huntsville Fire Department to be effective March 1st, 2014. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second?
A motion by Dr. Shauer, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Dr. Shauer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city council and mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama are apprised that Fire Marshal Joe L. Jordan will retire after 38 years of dedicated service to the Huntsville Fire Department to be effective March 1st, 2014. Joe has been employed with the city of Huntsville since 1975. During that time, he has served as a professional firefighter, driver engineer, and fire prevention slash investigation officer for the Huntsville Fire and Rescue. He also retired from the United States Navy Reserve after 20 years of service. And whereas, Joe was the first African-American to hold the rank and position of Fire Marshal for the city of Huntsville, Alabama. He was appointed Fire Marshal in 1995 by Mayor Steve Hellinger and has remained in that position for over 19 years. And whereas, he served on the firefighter interview committee for the hiring of approximately 235 firefighters, of which approximately 40 were minorities. In 38 years, 11 months, 7 days, his total job duties encompassed the following: firefighter, driver engineer, roster fire captain as needed, fire marshal, counselor, religious analyst, father, brother, friend, for all those who have solicited his assistance as needed or required. His educational background includes theology degree, Doctor of Theology, Andersonville Theological Seminary, MRE Masters of Religious Education, Andersonville Theological Seminary, BS Management from Alabama A&amp;M University, AS Fire Science, Calhoun Community College, AS Business Administration, Faulkner University, and AS Accounting, Iverson Business College. Whereas Joe is married to Joyce A. Love Jordan, and to this union, one son Gerald and two daughters, Charlotte and Lawwanda, were born. They have also been blessed with a second generation of grandchildren, Alita, Kendall, Hakeem, Jaden. And whereas, Fire Marshal Jordan is very active in the community and is a member of the following organization: Masonic Lodge, Master Mason, Tennessee Valley Consistorate, 32nd Degree Mason, Imperial Counsel, Elizah Shrine Temple, Number 169, Superintendent of Sunday School at Union Hill CP Church, ordained elder, Union Hill CP Church, Delta Mu, Theta, Phi, Sigma, let me redo that, Delta, Mu, Delta, Alpha, Sigma, Honor Society, and Phi Beta Sigma fraternity. Whereas, one of his accomplishments was receipt of certification from the Bureau of Fire Prevention, state and national, for fire prevention and fire investigation for all personnel of the agency. Huntsville was one of the top-rated departments in the state of Alabama. The Bureau of Fire Prevention Pilot Program was one of the first programs for juvenile fire setters intervention in the city of Huntsville, Alabama, where individuals were educated to the dangers and hazards of fire. The city of Huntsville, Alabama, has received several recognition for low rates of fire fatalities for a city the size of Huntsville. Whereas, the following poem entitled "The Unknown Fear" was written by Fire Marshal Joe Jordan. Fear can best be defined as an anticipation of danger, anxiety, or the frightful. Therefore, this question can only be answered from written within oneself. That question is, as stated, "Are you afraid that I'm going to treat you as you have treated me? Then I to you have no fear, for I am here as a result of a blessing unmerited given to me by God because of His love and mercy." And God gives us a blessing, use it in the order that someone else may also be blessed. So for that reason, I give God the highest praise, honor, and glory. So fear not, nor be afraid, for it would not please God if I treated you like you have treated me. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, that we express our appreciation to Fire Marshal Joe L. Jordan for his long career with the Huntsville Fire and Rescue and his many accomplishments for the betterment of this department and our city. We congratulate him upon his retirement and extend every good wish in all future endeavors. This document is signed by our mayor, Tommy Battle, Mark Russell, Bill Kling, John Oshasky, Will Coverd, and yours truly. Fire Marshal Jordan, would you come up? Mayor, I said earlier today when we had the reception for him, this is bittersweet. I mean, you were here when I came here. We had a handful of officers and today because of you, your undivided opportunity to work after hours, to encourage men to come to designated places for training, for assistance, for help, and we didn't pay you to do that, but we are delighted today that a Fire Marshal by the name of Joe Louis Jordan passed his way. And you've made the city of Huntsville proud, this state and this nation. And tonight, on behalf of our mayor, these council persons that you see standing, 185,000 loving, caring citizens that reside in this city, we want to give you this resolve, saying how much we love you and appreciate you and wish you well in your future endeavors.
I'd just like to say that it has been a pleasure. I see a lot of faces out here that I've worked with over the past 38, 39 years, and it's been wonderful. I've made a lot of friends and you're going to be missed, but my phone number is going to be the same. And so, so thank you for your support and just keep me in your prayers. It's going to be fine.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have a resolution congratulating Marie Bosick, City of Huntsville's manager of Planning Administration, upon her retirement after 26 years of dedicated service to the planning department. This will be effective February 28th, 2014.
Move for approval? Second.
A motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Shauer. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Ms. Kling?
Mr. President, if I seem to kind of low-key this, it's to me, it's because it's really not that big of a deal. Marie's done a great job. Next Monday, she goes to work and she's still going to be working for the city of Huntsville and the community. She'll just have a different physical location where her office will be located. So I kind of think of this as being kind of like halftime and Marie's just kind of going to a different venture, but she's still going to be working as Director of the Land Trust for the city of Huntsville. I would like to read just a few of the comments about Marie. I've known her before she became a city employee. I was a fellow student with her in graduate school at Alabama A&amp;M University and Marie was one of those students that you really wanted to be on a group project with because she made people like me look good despite my abilities. Marie had, her career with the city of Huntsville began in 1988 as a planner. She specialized in subdivision, site plan review, and green responsibilities including supervision of subdivision land development, environmental projects, including flood mitigation grants, slope regulation, and zoning and annexation policies. In the year two thousand and eleven, Marie was appointed Interim Urban Development Director. She supervised seven departments, all dealing with aspects of the urban-built environment. Currently, she holds the position, at least for maybe one more day, of manager of Planning Administration for the city of Huntsville, where she's been focusing on many aspects of city planning. And she was a big facilitator in many projects that we've had, including Twickenham Square and the Avenue. And other things that she had done include the update of the city's subdivision regulation and zoning ordinances, and also she had served as the project lead on all greenway development and open space acquisition, and we're proud of what that means for the city of Huntsville as far as quality of life. Marie was instrumental in the creation of the Hayes Nature Preserve, Goldsmith Schiffman Wildlife Sanctuary, and Wade Mountain Preserve. And Marie, I mean, Mr. President, you can certainly see that that shows that she has very strong credentials, and she'll continue to do a great job for the community as the head of the Huntsville Land Trust. So again, we wish her well, but it's not that big of a deal because we're gonna enjoy working with her in the future. And the only difference is, next Monday, she goes to a different, she goes to a different office. And if she's out there somewhere, we just want her to know thanks, and we're gonna look forward to working with you in the future.
Mr. Kling, if I could add to that, it is a big deal if you have to do, if you have to run the Planning Department, that's part of your, part of your venue, and Mr. Davis knows that. Anything that has happened over the last ten years in this city has Marie Bostick's fingerprints on it. She has been integral in doing all these, a lot of great things for this city. Any project that you look at, she had her fingers in. She made sure that it worked. She made sure that it was the best thing for the community, and she's served, she's served a long time for this community and made sure that this community is better each and every day. And I want to say congratulations to her, going on to her dream job at the Land Trust, but it is a big deal. We will miss you. Planning staff will miss you. Administration will miss you. Everybody in the city of Huntsville, or who deals with the city of Huntsville, will miss you because you've done such a great job, and thank you for what you've done.
Mr. Kling, are you asking Ms. Bostick to come down?
I'll leave that up to her.
We can always make her come down during one of the Planning Commission. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kling.
Marie, we'll let you say a few words if you like. We're not gonna fire you. There's nothing you could say.
Okay. We'll go, continue on with the agenda. Next, we have presentation of certificates of recognition to the boys' basketball team at Chapman Middle School, winner of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen middle school championship. I'd like to ask Coach Blanding to come join Mayor Battle and Dr. Showers and I on the dais. Coach Blanding, you had an outstanding year, and we're very proud of the Chapman basketball team. If you could, please introduce your coaching staff and the players.
First, we have Special Assistant Patrick Richardson. Andre C. Seventh grade, we have Tyrese Smith, Demarius Fletcher. Eighth grade, we have Ardis Tony, DeAndre Rainey, I mean, DeAngelo Rainey, I'm sorry, Markeith Tyner, Daquan Presley, Cameron Phillips, and Jaman Clayborne. As Mr. Russell said, we won the Huntsville City School two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen championship. Bigger than that, we went twenty-eight and oh this season. I think the most remarkable part about our season is these young gentlemen that you see before you hold a cumulative GPA of over three point oh.
Coach, I'd like to say congratulations. This week, I was at Chapman and got to visit a lot of the classrooms there, and making a three point oh GPA is not easy at Chapman. I could see in every one of those classes, teachers pushing students and making them learn, and beyond the athletic awards that you have here, most important thing are the academic awards, because all of us won't go on to be pro players or anything else, but we will all have to be part of life. And gentlemen, congratulations especially on your grades and also on your accomplishment of going twenty-eight and oh. Congratulations.
Guys, if we, please shake everybody's hands. Congratulations.
Thanks for what y'all do. Appreciate what y'all do. Top coach, appreciate what you do.
anniversary of the Fleming Westbury Civic Association. Mr. Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to honor one of the great neighborhood associations it's been my pleasure to work with. I've had a pleasure working with Tom McAdams and Ms. Gillespie and folks in the neighborhood for the past several years. We've done some good things over in that neighborhood, very good Community Watch chapter. We've done some beautification, got a traffic circle put in, some road resurfacing we took care of, some small neighborhood issues relating to fireworks at the wrong time we've got taken care of. But this is a neighborhood association, not only has it been very active, but it's been around for a long time. In fact, this could very well be the oldest continuous neighborhood association in the city of Huntsville. Originally, it was created fifty years ago as the Westbury Estates Civic Association. It was established in nineteen sixty-four, and over the years, it was changed and expanded, and it's now known as the Fleming, or Westbury, Westbury Fleming, wait, Fleming Westbury Civic Association, FWCA. We'll get that right, Tom. And I'd like to recognize one very special person. Marlene Solins is here. Marlene, would you please stand? Marlene and her husband Charles were one of the first family owners in Westbury Estates, and I've asked her to come down so we could present her certificate to her on behalf of the association. Her husband Charles, who had passed, was the founder of the Westbury Estates Civic Association in nineteen sixty-four. The association was modified, as I had mentioned, in two thousand nine to include Fleming Meadows Neighborhood. Charles was well-known as an attorney who always gave back to the community, and he helped many people at his own expense. And this is a theme of giving and helping others that he instilled that had helped the association for many years. And this legacy is certainly continuing on. Again, Tom McAdams, who's with them, certainly has carried on that legacy. So at this time, I'm gonna present this to Marlene, and also, let me just say a big thank you to all the others of the neighborhood association. Could y'all stand for a moment so we could see y'all? But here's just a little memento from the mayor and the council. We just wanted to say thank you. Fifty years is very impressive, and we're looking forward to some great things, and a bit of privilege to work with y'all on projects that we've had over the last several years. And be glad to let you make any comments that you would like.
Thank you. I think Tom's gonna do that.
I'll be pretty short. We just want to thank all the mayors, all the councilmen and women, and all the city employees who made our neighborhood a great place to live for fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kling. Under announcements, fifteen A has been deleted from our agenda. Fifteen A has been deleted, and fourteen C is being asked that we consider that tonight by YAM's consent. There's an emergency need to vote on that tonight. We're now at item five, business with outside legal representation. Five A is a council decision of personnel hearing held on February twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, for Ruben Smar of the Public Works Services. The chair moves to uphold the decision of the Personnel Committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Just to make sure I'm right, I have it passing three to two with Oshewski, Kling, Russell voting in favor, Culver and Dr. Showers voting against. It passes three to two. We're now at public hearings be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing in order to hear and consider all objections or protests, if any, for removal of nuisance at fourteen-ten Calvary Street Northwest Huntsville, Alabama. This was set February thirteenth, two thousand and fourteenth, regular council meeting. Mr. Binion.
This is just to hear objections to the proposed abatement of a public nuisance of fourteen-ten Calvary Street. I have photos here that I would like to show if I can get this to work. Okay, this shows the structure, the remains of the structure that's left at fourteen-ten Calvary Street. We see it as being unsafe. We feel like it might fall and present a danger to the public, so we're asking you to, one, we need to hear if there are any objections to it, and then accompanying resolution would allow us to go in and abate this nuisance by tearing it down.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Binion. Are there any objections or protests or comments on this item? Hearing on the public hearing is closed. Mr. Joffre, do I need to have this approved, or can we go straight to the next resolution?
No, this does need to be approved.
So the public here, we've just, we've just, there's no objections or protests?
Then you would go on to the next resolution, ordering the abatement of the nuisance.
Okay. Since there's no objections or protests, we're moving on to two, which is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance at fourteen-ten Calvary Street Northwest Huntsville, Alabama. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries four to zero, and let the record indicate Mr. Culver has left the building. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number fourteen-five, rezoning property lying on the north side of Carl T. Jones Drive and west of Ledges Drive from Residence Two A District and Neighborhood Business C One District to Highway Business C Four District. This was set January ninth, two thousand and fourteenth, regular council meeting. Ms. Letto.
Lisa Letto, Planning Division. This is a hundred and twenty-six point eight-nine acres. It's the hatched area that you see here. It's on the north side of Carl T. Jones Drive and west of Ledges Drive. The requested rezoning is from Residence Two A District for a hundred and twenty-five point seven-two acres and Neighborhood Business C One District for one point one-seven acres to Highway Business C Four District. Our Residence Two A District is a residential district that permits all housing types, including apartments, and our Neighborhood Business C One District is our smaller-scale retail sales and services district. The property owners have requested this rezoning. They've also offered some plat restrictions, and those restrictions would prohibit the following uses: auto auctions, automobile sales, automobile repair garages, light manufacturing and assembly, mobile home and trailer parks, class-one club liquor retailers without package sales, class-one lounge liquor retailers without package sales with or without entertainment, class-two club liquor retailers without package sales, and class-two lounge liquor retailers without package sales with or without entertainment. Excuse me. So simply said, that would eliminate bars, our lounges in this area through those plat restrictions. This currently vacant land is the site of a proposed commercial shopping development, and Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
Thank you, Ms. Letto. To the public, we should address the council on this particular issue. Sir, if you go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's James Inholm, eight-one-seven Olivia Avenue, Huntsville, three-five-eight-zero-two. I addressed the Planning Commission on this, and there were a few other people there at the same time, but I missed some of the comments, so not sure what other people's points of view are. I'm just giving my, my view as a resident of the area. As I understand it, this was zoned, a small part of this was zoned for C One and a large part of it is zoned for R Two, which is multifamily, essentially apartments or condos, I think. And now it's gonna be rezoned for C Four, which is highway commercial. And there's a number of things that I think should be thought through before this is approved. And they weren't, didn't seem to me to have been given that much consideration in public than, they may well have been considered behind the scenes, and there may be very good reasons I'm not aware of for going ahead with this, but there was a lot of talk initially of, oh, we don't want to lose the cows, we don't want to lose the cows, and that sort of stuff in the neighborhood. It's not our cows, it's not our land. That's really not, I don't think, a valid issue. But I think there is a really big concern about highway commercial. I'm not quite sure what that entails, and the Planning Department may be able to address that, but number one, that seems to be spot zoning. That's one bit of C Four right in the middle of no other C Four. I don't think that that's ever been done in the city before, as far as I know, and I'd like to know why that's being done. And I don't really know why we're considering doing that in this area. We have blighted highway commercial up and down the Parkway, up along University. The city has appointed a commission, I think, to look into how we can get that land brought back to use, and I don't think developers are going to develop that land if you sit there and say, well, we'll happily turn over a prime piece of residential real estate to you and turn that into new highway commercial. That doesn't seem to make sense to me. I mean, obviously, I don't think the people living around there particularly want highway commercial there, but I don't know. I can only speak for myself. It's not really what I would like. But I think that's a smaller issue than the issue of what are we looking at down the road? How are we going to stop moving essentially commerce from here to over here and saying, ooh, new shiny, we'll build something nice and new here? And that's gone to pieces. If a retailer wants to come to Huntsville, it may seem like they're being attracted by the package they're being given right now to develop, but actually, really, they're not. They're probably coming, and they're gonna look back over ten years for year-on-year growth of their sales. That's what their national office is gonna want. So they're gonna decide if they want to come to Huntsville independently of whether or not they're gonna be given a nice development package. And I think if they want to come here, we should say, well, we want you on South Parkway, North Parkway University. We want those high, existing empty highway, derelict highway commercial areas redeveloped. And I just don't see that's gonna happen if we do things like this. It doesn't seem to make much sense to me. It seems that, that, there's, if that was the plan for that, then it's in the middle of a residential area, there's no reason why it can't stay there, and if the- And if the idea is we're going to attract this new development, then why don't we attract it to the areas where it's supposed to be going already? Because those areas desperately need it. And the Whole Foods thing that was just announced seems to be, excuse me, a clear example of that. You've gone and taken an area that could use being redeveloped, the city has assisted them in making that happen, and that's happened along there. But I think there's less pressure for more of those things to happen if you say, well, you can go into this nice pristine area right in the middle of housing. And I just, I don't see, the public welfare is supposed to require it. That's the preamble to the ordinance. The public welfare doesn't require this, and I think it goes the other way. I think if we're looking long-term, well, my, my view from the outside is, the housing in the last couple of decades has gone to Madison and to the county. That's where a lot of people moving into this area have gone, and they've built up those schools, and they did that without high-end shopping. Madison didn't have high-end retail. People chose to go there without that, or maybe even because it was without that. We're not going to attract them by putting that in there. I don't think we are. And we are maybe losing them because of these blighted areas that we are having trouble rehabbing. And my big concern is, this seems to be going the wrong way, because you are taking the pressure off. They could be persuaded to go into those other places, I think. I think there's a very good argument for that. I'm not sure there's a very good argument for doing this. I had some other thoughts, and I wanted to see, well, the other, usually, one of the ideas which isn't talked about is, this new building is going to be some more property tax, because it's empty land, no tax on it right now. The city can definitely use the money. There's no question of that. But again, if it's simply moving activities here and we're leaving places derelict, what is the cost of that? And I'm not sure that's balanced by the new, bringing new property onto the tax rolls. And that's something I wanted to be thinking about. That's, I think, probably most of the points on it. So I'd be interested to know about the spot zoning. Has that been done before? Are we breaking new ground in allowing that here? What exactly is highway commercial? And has the city thought through whether or not this is really going in the right direction in terms of what we want to try and do to help get rid of those other existing highway commercial areas that are not being developed? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Letto, could you answer the questions about highway C4, then spot zoning, and then has the city looked at other options besides this, this particular project?
Yes, sir.
And I need you to speak in the microphone too, so if I can hear you. Thank you.
I'll give you a little history on this area. The property immediately to the south, the Jones Valley Shopping Center where the target is, this area is currently zoned Highway Business C4, excuse me, Neighborhood Business C1, and it's been zoned Neighborhood Business C1 since 1963. When that started to develop, the, we realized that the intent of the Neighborhood Business C1 District wasn't truly being followed. A Neighborhood Business C1 District is really intended to be a pedestrian-oriented district that serves adjacent neighborhoods. So when this was developed, there was some concern with, from the surrounding neighborhoods, and in 2001, the city council directed the Planning Division to come up with some new Neighborhood Business C1 District regulations that would limit the size of Neighborhood Business C1 Districts across the city, so that they would indeed remain smaller-scale retail sales and services that would serve neighborhoods. This was already zoned Neighborhood Business C1. It was developed as a large shopping center. Carl T. Jones is a major arterial, excuse me, a minor arterial, and our street classification system is based on the ability of the roadway to handle certain amounts of traffic. And a minor arterial is our second-highest roadway designation on our major street plan. The Neighborhood Business C1 District regulations limit the depth of a shopping area along a Neighborhood Business C1 District to 500 feet in depth, and along a local street, which would be, for example, Ledges Drive, to 200 feet in depth. So those, when those regulations were adopted in 2002, that limits the size of all future Neighborhood Business C1 Districts. When the property owners came in, they requested Highway Business C4 for this property in order to develop a shopping center similar to the one that is directly across the street. You can see that's very similar in size. It is appropriate to develop this type center across from a similar-sized shopping center. It is along a major arterial, I mean, excuse me, a minor arterial, and it, there's no surrounding residential uses at this time that this would impact. This is currently vacant property. The property is vacant to the west and to the north. The closest residences are Ledges, which are up on the top of the mountain. And so when they came in and requested this, it was reasonable. This is, again, 126.89 acres, and it would be hard to argue that's spot zoning. Spot zoning is a different type of legal consideration where you're doing it to benefit one property owner to the detriment of others. Because this is similar in shop, in the size of the shopping area across the street, it would be hard, hard to argue that would be spot zoning. Traffic studies have been conducted on this, and if the Residence 2A District were developed as apartments, you would have, on average, 12 units per acre, and they would actually generate more traffic than if this is developed as a shopping center. So we did look at all that. As far as different locations for a shopping center, unfortunately, the city can't direct businesses where to go. It would be nice if we could, but this is all market-driven. This is decided by the private businesses as to where they want to go. They do marketing studies that tell them the exact location, and if they can't have that exact location, oftentimes, they just won't locate at all. You can't direct where they're going to locate. And it will, if the property is indeed rezoned to Highway Business C4, it will increase the property tax base, but it will also, more importantly, increase the sales tax base. And as most people know, the city's budget relies heavily on our sales tax. And so we did look at all the different factors of this potential rezoning. We did consider it a valid request. The Planning Commission did vote in favor of it, and so that's what we have before you tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address council on this issue? Sir, have your questions been answered adequately? If you'd like to ask some more, please go up to the microphone.
Well, I wasn't quite sure on the regulations. You said that, you appear to be saying that the target shopping center was C1, but they developed more than they should have under C1, and it somehow came out larger than it should have been? Was that really what you were saying?
I'm not sure that was exactly what you said, but go ahead and explain.
Yeah, I'll try to be a little clearer.
Okay.
This area here where the target shopping center is, is zoned Neighborhood Business C1. It was zoned that way in 1963. And when they began construction, they fully met the Neighborhood Business C1 regulations at the time. It was after that area began construction that we were directed to limit the size of the Neighborhood Business C1 Districts, to limit the size of the C1 Districts in the rest of the parts of town. So they were fully able to develop that as you see it today.
Right. So if that was in compliance with C1, it doesn't make it really quite clear why it needs to be, they need to have more. They want to have more on the other side. I understand they want to have more, but I'm not sure that, I did not understand the justification of why the other side has to be C4 then. It could be shallower, not go back more than 500 yards, and be C1, I think. So I wasn't quite sure of how that was a justification for it, and it was, it seems more that you're just saying that's, they want this, so we're going to change the zoning for them so they can get what they want, rather than it's necessary or anything. I don't think there's any proof that we're going to increase the sales tax base at all. I mean, it's quite possible that people would simply shop there and stop shopping somewhere else. It's not really as though people in Huntsville say, there's a new store, I'm now going to spend more money this month. That just doesn't follow logically. It may happen, but it just easily may not. And we've certainly seen instances of where new retail areas opened up and other retail areas have died completely. So I don't think that there's a given that we're going to get more sales tax revenue from it at all. I think that's speculative at best.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address council on this issue? The public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Letto, is there, are there any other 126-acre tracts on the Parkway? You know, that was, I think the retailers want this big, large project to go in because that's where they wish to go. Are there any other places we could put a large shopping center like this?
I couldn't answer that question. There may or may not be. You may be able to assemble enough tracts to create 126 acres, but what's important is that this is the location where these, these shopping areas, these private businesses want to be. If they're not allowed to go in this particular location, based on their marketing studies, it is quite possible that they would not locate in Huntsville at all.
And they would just locate in another city, and they would enjoy the tax revenues from that?
That's correct.
Mayor Battle?
Mr. President, I'll tell you that, you know, if you go south on the Parkway, because of the residential, residential homes that bound both sides of the Parkway, you couldn't get 126-acre tract till at least down to Hazeline and maybe a little bit south of Hazeline that you could parcel together even just because of the residential creep that's in there.
Yeah. And the gentleman's point's well-taken that to fix the blighted areas, we've got to get commercial in there, but, and I've talked to you and Ms. Bostick about this many times, and it just won't work if you just forbid any new commercial areas to be put into Huntsville. They just won't go to the Parkway, they just won't go where we want them to go, and I believe that. And that's what you were saying there? Yeah, no matter how much we push, some of them aren't going to go to those areas? So, any other discussion?
If you get into smaller parcels of land, I think the old Walmart property at Drake and the Parkway could certainly be a good prospect, given the location of traffic counts in that area.
Further?
Mr. President, I would be remiss if I would not say that there are two parcels of land, one at Oakwood and the Parkway. You have another partial of land that's available at Max Luther and the Parkway on both sides, the corner where the old Howard Johnson used to be. Those are all spots that certainly would qualify to be developed. I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that we have another end of town that is in need of several opportunities, and those parcels are there. I will continue to bring that up at these meetings until we have an opportunity to move to those sites.
Absolutely. And that's, I think, one of the points, is we can't, can't tell the people where to go. We can try to make it desirable for them to go in certain locations, and I think we're all committed to doing that. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no public hearings to be set. We do have communications from the public. When I call your name, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Taylor, and I live at 11,000 Gene Road. I've got some gifts here for the mayor Battle and the council members, if somebody could take them.
The Stamper, if you could go to the microphone, please.
This is for Mayor Battle, and, let's see, these are all for the council members. And I'm going to do this without my notes.
Great.
I'll try to be brief. First of all, Mayor Battle and council members, thank y'all for allowing me to speak with y'all this evening. I think that y'all are doing a marvelous job. Thank y'all for all that y'all do. I was going to come and introduce myself to y'all on the day before my birthday, which was Valentine's Day, but the snow kept me from coming, so I'm sorry that I was not able to be with y'all. I work at Star Market Grocery Store on Bailey Cove Road in Weatherly. When I'm not working there, I work at the Southeast Huntsville YMCA, Heart of the Valley YMCA, and I watch y'all on TV. I think of all of y'all as family, family members, my family. And I know that through Christ, we're all related. Anyways, what I'd like to talk to y'all about tonight is heroes. Growing up, some of my heroes as a kid were Batman, Superman, Spider-Man, but as I mentioned, Valentine's Day was my birthday, and my heroes now are firefighters, police officers, men and women in uniform. But I, tonight while I'm speaking with y'all is, there are hometown heroes, and I'd like to talk about a few of those. Some of those, y'all, some y'all have probably heard of and are familiar with. I'm going to start with my church. I go to Good Shepherd Catholic Church. My choir director, Ms. Mickey Lightall, she's one of my heroes. Ms. Lightall, she stage managed I Love America and Witch Mayor Battle, and First Lady Ms. Yula, they were there, so I appreciate y'all for attending. One of my other heroes is Mr. Danny Shea. I believe that the city of Huntsville is a much better community because Mr. Shea is employed with the city. He is awesome. He's an awesome person. And Ms. Reed, Ms. Jackie Reed, she's another one of my heroes. I remember many years ago, I went, she was having a yard sale at her home, and she was nice enough to give me some reel-to-reels. And Ms. Reed is another one of my heroes, and since we're talking about her, Mayor Battle, that really warmed my heart, hearing that you went by her workplace around Christmas to bless her with a Christmas card. Thank you for doing that. I used to work at Ryan's, the one on South Parkway, many, many years ago. And another one of my heroes is Mr. Darden Heritage, our owner of Star Supermarket. He is wonderful. I remember back when the tornadoes came through, he kept the store open until late hours of the night. And finally, one of my other heroes is Reverend Walter PV at WDJL Radio. On Wednesdays, I do a radio show out there. I talk about local events going on at the YMCA and at Star Market. Reverend PV has a heart for the homeless. He's a, he's a blessing to everybody. And that's all I have to say. Thank y'all again for the job that y'all are doing, and I pray for y'all daily.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Appreciate that.
Mr. President, I might add, that gentleman works with one of my heroes, Mr. Richard Dick Kitchens, who's out there, and you guys do a great job out there. I've been out there many times, and you're a hero too.
Mr. Jerry Cox?
Jerry Cox, 4029 Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as we've, we've had a lot to complain about with the weather and this bad winter and all, but as we concern ourselves with all these other issues, let us not forget that there are U.S. military personnel dying in Afghanistan. In the last two weeks, I wish to respectfully acknowledge the four U.S. Army soldiers and the one United States Marine that has died in the war. So as we celebrate things, and we're patting ourselves on the back for doing things, and we're complaining about things, let's not forget that almost every day, there's an American military person dying in Afghanistan. Mr. President, the Board of Directors of the Huntsville Chapter of Retired Federal Employees has tasked me with coming to the council tonight to speak on behalf of all the membership of Chapter 44, 044 of the National Active and Retired Federal Employees in thanking Mr. Tommy Brown, who came this month to our meeting to present our program and talk to us about the functions of his department, especially the shuttle bus system and the handy ride system, which are two areas that are of great interest to our, to our employees. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for giving us your Saturday morning. Mr. President, over the years, as I've had issues arise in my neighborhood and throughout other parts of the town, I was fortunate enough to have access to Ms. Marie Bostick when I needed access to her with such, with questions or whatever, or problems. Not only is Marie Bostick well-qualified for those positions, she has the disposition that you can talk to, that she appreciates your concerns, and gives credence to your concerns. So I wish to, on behalf of my neighborhood, say congratulations to Marie on her retirement, but most of all, to thank her for her service to the public. As we've gone through this very bad winter, there's been times when public works employees who pick up garbage and trash in my neighborhood have had to maybe miss a day or whatever, but still, no matter how cold it was, if roads would- but still, no matter how cold it was, if roads would permit, they were out there in their neighborhoods picking up their garbage. So I want to, I want to recognize the public service of the Public Works employees who pick up garbage and trash in my neighborhood, as I hope that every citizen shares with the employees in their neighborhood. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Jackie Reed? Good evening.
Thanks for laying public info. Mark Russell, you're my hero. Thank you.
You're mine.
Bless you.
Be nice to us tonight, you're a hero, remember?
Yes. I want to thank this gentleman here for all the kind words that he said about all the people back there, that means a lot, and to all the city employees that work so hard. Checking the agenda, sometimes I get my mind real occupied when I walk in these council chambers, and I get, I get on the issues and get concerned sometimes. I want to congratulate the Fire Marshal, Mr. Jordan, for, gosh, 38 years of city services? Mercy. And I want to congratulate also Marie Bostick, Manager of Planning Department, for 26 years. Who will I pick on and call now, and I can pick on? She and Dallas Fanning have done some powerful planning over the years, I've been here with them, and I've been calling and fussing at them and hollering at them, and they've done some powerful planning, I've been here watching them, and, but Marie's one person I would have to say, you never could rattle, I've never seen her mad, no matter how much I asked her, how many questions I did, she always kept her cool, and she always did her job well, and I'm going to miss her, I don't know who I'm going to pick on now when she leaves, but I want to congratulate them both and I wish them well. Questions about Holmes Avenue being closed about how long, y'all can just give me an estimate, I've turned around over there so many times trying to get back to my house on that Holmes Avenue being closed on that part right there. Also, the streets downtown, I hope we're not through with those bumpy rocky brick streets downtown, I have a problem of thinking that we're through with that. Somebody drive downtown about three, four times a day and see if that's the way we're going to leave that. I also heard a rumor, someone told me it worked, Old Madison Pike has been started, hallelujah. After 17 or 20 years, I'm glad to hear the shovel, I haven't seen it yet, but I know you're turning dirt down over there somewhere. I went to Planning Department the other day, and I'll hurry, the chickens hadn't laid the coop, we hadn't laid those chickens down. I went to Planning Department, and there's an ordinance called Urban Farms, they're going to allow livestock now. Here it is, livestock, Urban Farms. They permit which farming is conducted, including the growing of fruit, vegetables, and other plants, products, and the raising of livestock for commercial sales. Please, you've got to read this urban agriculture thing. We have made an amendment of every district in this city to allow crops, pigs, chickens, horses, cows, the chickens was a blessing compared to what I read in this. Don't let that come to you without you knowing what's going on, because the chickens hadn't flown the coop. They say livestock, chicken's not a livestock. We're going to put the two legs chickens in the livestock business because I didn't, I think you all must have read this when we let the chicken deal die, and they're going to ease them in on it. But anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak, don't let this come up there, Marie's fixing to leave us with this thing, hey.
I understand, Ms. Reed.
Hey, we can't let her leave till we get this straightened out, because I've got to call her day and night, and thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I guess Ms. Reed's trying to say is that she's concerned about Marie flying the coop.
We have no Huntsville utility items, we do have a board appointment to be voted on, we have a resolution to reappoint Jim Batson to the Board of Examinations and Appeals for Construction Industries for a term to expire September 21st, 2015, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Doc Showers, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, it carries. We have nominations, I have a nomination of Lee Jones, Lee Jones for reappointment to the Huntsville Public Library Board for a term to expire February 10th, 2018, are there other nominations?
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
I'd like to nominate Michelle Cummings for reappointment, Community Development Citizens' Advisory Council, that term, or the current term she has expires April 28th, 2014, and also I'd like to nominate Madison County District Board, Place Six, oh, excuse me, Madison County Communications District Board, Place Six, Brett Birdwell. And also, the Medical Clinic Board of the City of Huntsville, 1966, I'd like to nominate Teresa Bingham for that vacancy, expires March 10th, 2014.
Are there other nominations? Moving on, we're at 10 approvals, suspensions, 10A is a resolution authorized for suspended for payment, Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to move for payment of vouchers, the amount of $4,42,055 and 27 cents.
Second. Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Doc Showers, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Ms. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
No, Mr. President, no report.
Thank you, Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I'd like to make some appointments, Harry Garber to the Board of Zoning Adjustment effective March 9th, 2014, for a three-year term to expire March 9th, 2017. Mr. Garber was, was serving in a supernumerary position in that board. David Branham, who was also serving as a supernumerary position on that board, to the Board of Zoning Adjustment effective March 9th, 2014, for a three-year term to expire March 9th, 2017. Johnny Oger to, as a supernumerary member of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, affected March 9th, 2014, for a partial term to expire March 9th, 2016. And we'd also like to appoint Jennifer Nelson to the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville to fill an unexpired supernumerary position to expire October 20th, 2014. This has been, the last couple of weeks have been busy weeks, we've had a lot going on. Number one, we learned that Marie was going to leave and go to the Land Trust, and we want to say congratulations to the Land Trust, and, and again, Marie will miss you, thank you for the great job that you've done. We had an interesting conversation at the very first, when I first came in, and, and she has been a marvelous department head, super department head, and has handled much of the business of the city for, for all five years I've been here, and I couldn't ask for somebody who'd do a better job, and, and the only thing we could wish is that you go on to the job that you really love, which is Land Trust, and we're so glad that you're going there, but we will miss you. Secondly, there's a bike symposium going on over at Von Braun Civic Center today and tomorrow, it's Alabama's first bike symposium, conference by the Alabama Bike Association, and it will be happening today and tomorrow at the, at the Von Braun Civic Center. And we had a pretty good week last week, you know, Monday we announced Remington coming here with 2,000 jobs, it was a, it was a real team effort, it took this council working together, it took the County Commission working with us, it took the Chairman of the County Commission, it took the Limestone County Commission, and the City of Athens, and the Morgan County Commission, and we had a great group who worked across the board. And then we had, TBA came in and helped with the process, and also Alabama Department of Commerce and the Governor's Office stepped in, and through that team effort, we ended up with a company coming here, which is going to expand to this area, will provide 2,000 jobs to the area, and a total of $110 million worth of payroll to this area, and they're going to invest over $100 million into the plant, so that was a good Monday. On Tuesday, we had the announcement of the 3,000,000th engine made at the Toyota Motor Plant, the only Toyota Motor Plant in the world under one roof where they produce four of the different Toyota engines, and also they opened up their V6 production that day, and they're going to be hiring another 125 people for that. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we had Association of the U.S. Army in this area, 6,500 people, there were 200 companies which were exhibitors, over half those companies were not from Huntsville, and as we call them, they're likely suspects, and many don't realize how big an impact that will have, bigger than the first two events that happened earlier in the week, the spin-off effect of those folks coming to Huntsville, Alabama, seeing what we do here, seeing this community, gives us a leg up on the next round of recruitment, the next round of BRAC, and expanding the, expanding the arsenal. It's been a good week. During the past several weeks, we've been going and visiting the schools that are labeled by the Alabama Department of Education and labeled according to some legislation through the Alabama Legislature as a failing school, and I can tell you, those schools are not failing. Two weeks ago, went to Dawson Elementary, went to Davis Hills Middle School a week ago, to this week, we went to Chapman Middle School, and we're going to continue going around to those, and I can tell you, when you look in those schools, they are well-disciplined, the administration is running a great school, the teachers are in there, and they're teaching passionately, they're using that one-to-one technology to provide a superior education in there, and also they're using the STAR system of accountability to make sure that we get a year's worth of education out of a year's worth of instruction. And I do want to say this, those schools, I would not hesitate to put my child in any one of those schools that we've been to, and we're going to continue to go through there, Kenny Anderson is going with me on those trips, our Director of Multicultural Affairs, and we're, we're, we're going to be able to tell the good stories, the good stories of the system. I think well, all, most of us heard some good stories down at Grissom two weeks ago, about a school that is, you know, one of the top schools in, in the nation, they were eighth in math, in the mathematic competitions across the country, and their ACT scores are higher than, than any of the other schools in the area, and they're, they have more presidential scholars than some of the other schools that people would classify as great schools. So we're having some great things happening in our school system right now, and I think that it's time that we came out and talked about them, so that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing at this time. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle, Doc Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. We went to a ribbon cutting today at the Harris Home, they had the, the new facility there on Church Street Recreational Center and their residential hall. Had breakfast this week with the Madison County Commission, its chairman, our mayor, both groups came together and to talk about mutual relationships. Of course, today I attended the Fire Marshal's Joe Jordan Retirement Reception. I want to announce now that tomorrow at 9:30, Johnson High School groundbreaking for the new named Dr. May Jemison, that's tomorrow at 9:30, it's going to be on Pulaski Pike, next door to the Fire Department. Some of you have seen the gravel that's been spread out there to site right on Pulaski, that event will take place tomorrow at 9:30. Will attend the Delta's Cluster tomorrow, they'll have their welcome program at the Mary Out tomorrow at 6:00 P.M. Will be attending the 30th Anniversary Celebration of Pastor TC Johnson and the Gala Banquet Friday at 7:00 P.M. at the Von Braun Center. And finally, Mr. President, District One will have its town meeting Monday, March 3rd, at the Shower Center at 6:00 P.M. The topic of discussion is school zoning, and of course, my concern tonight for all of our schools, to be quality schools, for all of our schools to have high academics, I look forward to discussing more of that issue and giving the public a voice, an opportunity to express themselves as it relates to our school district, our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Olszewski?
Thanks. Jerry, thanks for always bringing us back to earth, and remember, our soldiers are fighting for our freedoms, the word freedom isn't used enough today, and I appreciate you always bringing it up and telling us to put us back grassroots. I got, I learned more from with Shane Cook today about beavers than I ever wanted to learn in my life. Got issues down in my area where water is, to some people's good, but to some people in their backyard is not, and there's a lot of beavers, and I didn't know about it, but I took him and his father-in-law, who's, who used to work for me over at Redstone, and talked to neighbors and got to see people I haven't seen, and we're working on this beaver situation we got. It was an honor to be at an event with the mayor this week, stuff he, he's like, you know, I know he's the mayor, and everybody tells him how great he is and everything, but I will share with you that I'm proud to be, I'm proud to be with him when he goes to places like Chaffee, and he tells the story, and it was, it was very well done, and I appreciate him being there, Mr. Hayes was there as well, but our mayor knows how to tell the story, and it's a story that we need to tell more often, because it's part of a problem. Yeah, we got issues, but so does everybody have issues, but we got a good thing going here, mayor, and appreciate you being out front and coming to things like that, and it's a big deal, and it means a lot to me. You know, I didn't know Mr. Jordan that well, but I know the people that work for him real well, and you only, you're only judged noseyly by those that work for you, what they think of you, and I talked to those folks here recently, and they, they, they really know they're losing something special here. He is a one heck of a mentor to these Fire Marshals that work for him, and I just want to say publicly to Mr. Jordan, that he has raised up some youth that I think will do just fine following his footsteps and keep it going. Now, subject that we've been talking about all night, but I'm going there, I have this thing, that it's an Army thing, that what does right look like? And I used to get beat on that a lot when I was a staff officer in a division, and I was going to tell you something, y'all talked, we talked around it a bunch tonight, but if you want to know what right looks like in a staff officer in a major organization, Marie Bostick is what right looks like. Now, y'all said it, but I'm going there with it, I'm not sure in 27 years of the Army, and five years since I've been out, that I've ever run anybody that's as qualified and such a great staff officer as Marie. I would welcome Marie being on a staff that I was on, any, any day, any time, any place. What's great about Marie is, I think Jackie said it earlier, she never gets riled, and she might be riled inside, but on the outside, she can't, she handles it quite well, and she's another one that's represented our city tremendously. What I loved about Marie the most, for somebody like me, who when I came in was the newest one, and having to deal with, you remember a road up on Green Mountain, Marie, and having to tell some people that I didn't want to have to tell, and you helped me walk that dog, what I like about Marie the most, for me, John Olszewski, for the rest of you, I, you know, you got your own stories, but my story is, Marie follows the book really well, but when you get, when you finally just get tired of hearing the book, and this is the way it is, you can also pull Marie on the side and say, hey, Marie, what do you really think? And Marie has always done that with me, and I appreciate that more, because the book is, is a guideline, and there are, you know, there's regulations and there's law, but she allowed you to, with regulations, to be able to maneuver around in that battle space, and Marie, from me to you, I appreciate everything you've done, I'm the short timer up here on that, but you are a true blessing, there are a guy like me coming in, that could, we could come in and talk, and I appreciate everything you've done for your, your city and your state, and looking forward to you going over there, and yes, bring your little sheet over, and I will join it as a member, and God bless you, and go out, and I know you'll do great things, that's all I got.
Ms. Kling?
Mr. President, today there was more news about the, about the school system and the rezoning plan, and the school system and the Department of Justice. I know we all understand that the school board, not the city council, runs the school system, the school board makes the decisions and works on all these things, but after the dust clears, on whatever shape or form this rezoning ends up in, it appears there are going to be numerous empty schools throughout the city, including as many as three in West Huntsville. After everything settles down on this issue, and we know what the actual rezoning plan is going to be, I'd like to see if we could have a work session, get city folks, the school system folks together to talk about, I guess, the impact that these empty schools are going to have on neighborhoods, and see if we can come up with a plan of action, how are these facilities going to be used, because empty schools are not good for neighborhoods, regardless of what part of the city that they're in. And again, it's kind of fluid, we don't know how long this is going to be before the issue gets finally resolved, but I think that is something that'll be important, not only to West Huntsville, but also... to West Huntsville, but also many neighborhoods throughout the city. Couple of things that I want to kind of raise, raise my hand about, excuse me, there's been a problem, Shane, are you up there? Shane Davis? I guess you're kind of the man of the hour these days on a lot of issues. Shane, I think you know, we've had some problems last couple of weekends with noise, and dumpster noise emptying from trucks that have been impacting the Mayfair and Midtown neighborhoods along L and N, seems to happen more often on weekends, and I think you and I talked, I think you've got a plan of action to basically prohibit that, so we're not going to have construction noise before the hour that it's allowed, and we're not going to have dumpster trucks emptying earlier than they're supposed to.
Councilman Kling, as you're, you and I worked Saturday morning with some residents to take care of some concerns, and on Monday morning, both our Natural Resources Department, Inspection Department, Engineering Department held meetings and conversations with general contractor to reiterate that, and I think that problem's been taken care of.
Okay. Another issue on L and N, you know, there's been some interest in the Midtown neighborhood, and I think they've had discussions about the truck routing of delivery trucks to the new Walmart when it's constructed. What's the latest on the, on the commitment or status for Walmart?
Yeah, I can tell you, we've had conversations with Walmart Logistics. Currently, there's a proposal going through and getting signatures, both through the Distribution Logistics Department with Bentonville Home Office. It looks like their truck traffic will access the new location from the Memorial Parkway Service Road and from L and N Drive, which I don't think the public is well aware, but L and N Drive comes out on the Parkway Service Roads just north of Airport Road. They have committed, you know, they will not be using Drake and L and N, I think that's been the Midtown Association's concerns, and they'll be providing us a letter just to reassure that.
I think the Drake and L and N, you know, making a 90-degree turn and going into other lanes of traffic, I think that was a traffic hazard that people were worried about. And another issue, and I think this might be more of Tommy Brown's area, maybe even the Police Department, there have been signs that were posted on Center Avenue at Whitesburg about no left turn, and those signs were posted by the Transportation Department a couple of weeks ago, and I'm getting reports from the neighborhood that there's still cars going out and making left-hand turns even though they're not supposed to. Is there some enforcement we could get, the Police Department involved, or something about that? Because the signs are posted, and after two weeks, I think people ought to understand you're not supposed to make a left-hand turn.
Yeah, I'll get Chief Morris on that. Our folks are still there regarding the parking, but Chief Morris's folks would do that, and I'll, I'll talk with him and make sure we get folks out there.
Chief, is there anything you want to add to it about the Police Department? I know Officer Roberts, I think, has had some involvement in that.
No, we can get with Mr. Brown, when his people are through, we can certainly enforce that ordinance. It needs to, the signs need to be there for a while.
Okay, the signs have been there for two weeks, and I think neighborhood folks have been out there and just watching cars making a left-hand turn onto Whitesburg, which-
We can put somebody out there to take a look at.
Okay, thank you. Like that. I want to thank those who came to my town meeting last Monday, we, we had a lot of input about road resurfacing and some streets that Mr. Hatfield has received the names of, and he's been rating those and seeing what he can do, and we appreciate that, because that's going, when the weather warms up, we're going to have resurfacing throughout the city, and I think, given the weather we've had, I think that'll certainly be a good thing. And, Mr. President, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. We're now at 13 unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 14-83 approving the following street name change, a portion of Veridian Way Southeast to be renamed Bluff View Drive Southeast. This was introduced February 13, 2014, at the regular council meeting, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Bostic, welcome back.
[laughing]
Everybody said you were gone, I knew you'd be back.
Yeah, I'm back, same.
Please explain this.
I have a wonderful little map, it just won't come up right now, but this is on Green Mountain, it is a request by the developer to rename a portion of Veridian to Bluff, here we go, is an Inspiration Point subdivision. There was originally a developer who named it Veridian, since that time, it has been bought by a different developer, and he would like to call it Bluff View. It doesn't have any addresses on it, so it will not affect any existing homes, and this, the northern part of the road has already been named Bluff View, so this really just cleans it up, and planning commission recommended approval.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. B is ordinance number 14-84 regarding the naming of Holiday Boulevard. This was introduced February 13, 2014, at the regular council meeting, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Bostic.
Yes, sir, this is a new road that's located between Highway 72 West and Brown's Ferry Road. It is proposed to be called Holiday Boulevard, the property owners along the road were named Holiday. It is spelled differently from the Holiday, as in Christmas holiday, or Drive, which is in Huntsville, and is also in Limestone County instead of Madison.
Just for the record, this spelling is H-O-L-L-A-D-A-Y.
That's correct.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. C is ordinance number 14-85 for the annexation of land on the west side of Christopher Drive and north of US Highway 72 West. This was introduced February 13, 2014, at the regular council meeting, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Bostic.
Yes, sir, this is a little over three-acre tract of land on the west side of Christopher, there is an existing single-family home on the property, and they have requested annexation for fire service.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is ordinance number 14-86 for the annexation of land on the west side of Nick Fitchard Road and west of Research Park Boulevard. This was introduced February 13, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Ms. Kling. Ms. Bostic?
Yes, sir, this is a two-acre tract of land, you can see it's an infill parcel, and it is proposed for commercial development just to the west of Highway 53.
Thank you. Further discussion? Do you know what type of commercial development it's?
I do not, sir.
On there, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. E is ordinance number 14-88 to amend ordinance number 10-676, fee schedule for animal services. This was introduced February 13, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Olszewski. Is Dr. Hill here? Could you explain this, please?
Karen Hill, Animal Services. The fee schedule is adjusting to simplify our adoption fees and to allow some flexibility so that we can have animal specials. So during the middle of kitten season, we can reduce our price on kittens. Works very effectively.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. F is ordinance number 14-89 to amend Article 1, Chapter 5, Section 5-1, Article 2, Division 1, Chapter 5, Sections 5-41, 5-73, and 5-74 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville due to new wording, changes in adoption, and redemption rules and regulations. This was introduced February 13, 2014, at the regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Olszewski. Dr. Hill? Ms. Reed had thought we were slipping in chickens in this ordinance, can you assure her that you're okay?
I told her it was about chickens, and it didn't, wasn't very pleasant, the look she gave me, so, I told her the truth, no chickens, only dogs and cats.
And can you just explain this, please?
Yeah, this also changes some of the adoption that's actually written into the ordinance and not associated with the fee schedule, and it also allows us that when someone buys a particular license, that their pet has not been fixed, and then they show proof it has, we're able to reward them with a free lifetime license. It's just a really, it helps make our ordinance more user-friendly for our shelter.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at new business items for introduction. 14A is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land on the west side of Doug Hill Road and north of Rain Tree Road. B is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land on the north side of Mohawk Road and west of Taylor Road. C, which we've been asked to consider tonight, is an ordinance to amend ordinance 8979 Classification Salary Plan ordinance. The chair moves, can I ask consent to vote on this issue tonight?
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Olszewski, how do you vote? Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Dr. Showers? The chair votes aye, we have unanimous consent, the chair moves for approval of the item. Second by Dr. Showers. Is Mr. Thomas here? First, could you explain why we need to do this tonight, and then, second, what this is?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance to amend our classification salary plan to add a new position in traffic engineering, it's a deputy director of traffic engineering position. The department has questioned that unanimous consent tonight, so they can go ahead and act upon it, to make sure they have efficient operation of the department as they move forward, based upon some maybe possible staffing needs.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at 15 new business items for consideration of action, keep in mind, 15A has been deleted, the chair holds 15B, 15D, are there any others you'd like to hold?
Yes, 15D, as in dog, 15U.
Okay, I've got 15B, 15D, and 15U. Are there others? Hearing no others. 15C is a resolution authorized in city attorney to settle the claim of Elizabeth Owens. E is a resolution authorized mayor to accept a grant from the Alabama Department of Homeland Security. F is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement between the Morgan County Sheriff's Office and the City of Huntsville for the donation of a drug detection dog to the Morgan County Sheriff's Office. G is ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 12-768 by changing appropriating funding within various departments and funds. H is a resolution authorized mayor to execute a special employment agreement with Vena Call. I is a resolution authorized mayor to execute a special employment agreement with Carlos Elboudin. J is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement with OMI Inc. for engineering services for risk assessments, environmental covenant for the relocation of Wind Drive, project number 6514 SP 19. K is a resolution authorized mayor to modify the agreement with Brassfield &amp; Gorey LLC for project management services for Redstone Gateway Package I and Package J, project number 6513 SP 20 by modification number 2. L is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement with ADS Environmental Services, Division of ADS LLC for engineering services for Infonet Integration with CMOM Management, project number 6514 SP 13. M is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement with Garver LLC for engineering construction administration services for 2014 water pollution control, sanitary sewer rehabilitation, project number 6514 SP 14. N is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement with Garver LLC for 2014 on-call surveying services, project number 6514 SS 05. O is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement with Sharp Communication Inc. for technical services for support and installation, repair, and maintenance for network panels and apertures associated with the city's SCADA network, project number 6514 SP 12. P is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement with Johnson Associate Consulting Engineers LLC for feasibility study for potential fill site north of Oway Highway 20, project number 6514 SP 11. Q is a resolution authorized mayor to contract with Family Services Inc. to build up three new houses. R is a resolution authorized mayor to modify contracts 13-439 with Family Services Inc. to specify construction address. S is a resolution authorized mayor to modify contract 13-440 with Family Services Inc. to specify construction address. T is a resolution authorized mayor in a contract with Gold Star Mortgage Financial Group Corporation doing business as Midtown Mortgage Company as a participating lender for the Down Payment Assistance Program. V is a resolution authorized mayor to execute agreement between the City of Huntsville and Dunn Building Company LLC for the construction of Lakewood Community Center Roof located at 3601 Kenwood Drive. W is a resolution of the city council of the City of Huntsville in support of House Bill 141 and the North Alabama Spray Neuter Clinic. X is a resolution authorized in acceptance of donations. Chair moves for consolidation approval of 15C, 15E through T, and 15V through X.
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Mr. Kling, consolidation approval. All those in favor, consolidation approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at 15B. 15B is a resolution authorized mayor to execute agreement among the City of Huntsville, Alabama, Madison County, Alabama, and Industrial Development Board of the City of Huntsville, and Remington Outdoor Company, Inc. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mayor Battle.
Mr. President, this is the agreement, which is a cooperative agreement among many governments who have come together to make this project work. Our agreement, the agreement was crafted and written by the city attorney, along with some, some help from Rod Kanter, who is our attorney on industrial development affairs. It has in it the incentives that are given to Remington for bringing the 2,000 jobs. The incentives for the City of Huntsville are $9.5 million. That $9.5 million purchases a building, which we have a mortgage on, over an 11-year period, there's a payment to be made by Remington each year that they hit their employment numbers, that payment is forgiven. If they don't hit their employment numbers, that, that payment is pro-rata, figured out. It is an agreement that has clawbacks for the protection of the taxpayers, although Remington is a great honorable company, and I don't ever expect to have to touch those clawbacks. The, it further has that the Madison County will be providing $3 million for this, of incentive for this, and then over a two-year period, there's another $2 million, which is coming from Morgan County and Limestone County, total of $14.5 million. We can feel pretty good about our investment. The day after the, the building was purchased for $10.5 million, it was insured for $235 million, so we have a fairly good hold on what we have. We will be, the benefit that will come out of doing those incentives, and that's the whole reason you're doing this, all benefits to the community, the benefits that come back to those, is over $100 million of investment in the plant, $110 million in payroll year in and year out, as of, I think it's the end of year eight, and we ramp up between year eight and, and year one. It's, it is, it is your, as I mentioned, we worked with the state of Alabama to, they are putting in $54 million worth of incentives in this, but it provides jobs, long-term jobs, and it also provides jobs in the area that we've been looking for, advanced manufacturing. We have quite a bit of advanced manufacturing in the city of Huntsville, but we're known for engineering and being rocket scientists and everything else, but advanced, advanced manufacturing is very important to us. These are the production-style jobs that are high-tech production-style jobs, they require an educated workforce to do it, but it's also a workforce that may not necessarily be the people who end up going to college, or may not necessarily be the people who end up being the rocket scientists in the world, and this is something that we have been working for. Toyota is advanced manufacturing, Adtran has some advanced manufacturing, Teledyne Brown's doing some advanced manufacturing, Raytheon is doing advanced manufacturing with their missile plant. So we're now becoming known for advanced manufacturing, when you put that together with the engineering, and you tie it all together, we can start a product, we can design a product, we can make a product in Huntsville, Alabama, and then we can ship it out to the world market. When you can do all three of those, you have a very strong economy, and that's, that's, that's why this is an important project to us.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Mr. Jaffray, can you explain to the council and to the public what the process is? We, we had a meeting February 17th and approved this, and now we're coming back to prove it again, and have there been any significant changes between the contract we approved on February 17th and this one we'll approve tonight?
No, sir, in terms of substance, there have been no changes. There have been some formatting changes, because Remington had desired to remove any kind of duplicative language that might have existed in some of the exhibits versus what was in the draft of the agreement. So, we've eliminated the duplication, which has changed the form of the agreement, but in substance, it's identical. And in terms of the process, tonight's meeting, the approval at tonight's meeting, if approval is obtained, is, was required tonight in order to satisfy the requirements of Amendment 772 of the Alabama Constitution. Under that amendment, because the city is providing money for private infrastructure improvements, there is a notification process, a publication process that has to be met, and in order to meet the time deadlines in that process, we could not have the council approve the agreement under Amendment 772 until tonight, that was the earliest date possible. So the action taken on the 17th was really an expression of the council's intent to comply with the requirements and to enter into an agreement, but it did not actually officially enter into the agreement on that date.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? A call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is a resolution authorized, the mayor- Opposed? It carries. D is a resolution authorized, the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Huntsville and JRF Consulting LLC for on-call professional services.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Jaffron, who is JRRF Consulting?
That is Dallas Fanning. Those are actually the initials of his son, but it is Dallas Fanning's company, and he is, this is a consulting, a renewal of a consulting contract with, with Mr. Fanning.
Could you explain the terms briefly? Mr. Davis?
Council members, it's, it's an annual contract. It's a time of materials on an as-needed basis. It's not guaranteed payment. It's, the term is 12 months in calendar years. The cap is $60,000, and we're used as, as needed. I'll give you a recent example that he was very crucial to us. As you remember, back in the fall, we were competing for the 777X Boeing project. You may or may not remember, we competed for the Dreamliner that went to South Carolina. Dallas Fanning was part of that group and had a ton of history of how well we competed, where our strengths were, our weaknesses were, on the Dreamliner that allowed us to put a better package together. So it's as-needed pulling in. I know he is working with the school board some on the redistricting, providing some of that history of the city growth. So like I said, it's critical at times. There may be months that we don't need the contract at all.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
And Mr. President, if I could point out on the item B, I was going to point out that Will Culver left the meeting to go represent the city. We asked him to represent the city at Commissar Harrison's meeting up in the north end of town. He, we felt like we needed someone from the city there, was addressing some city issues, and Mr. Culver agreed to do that for us.
Thank you. 15U is a resolution authorized in a cooperative agreement between the City of Tuscaloosa, City of Florence, the City of Daphne, the City of Albertville, the City of Boaz, the City of Troy, the City of Huntsville, the East Alabama Recycling Partnership by and through Auburn University, and the Alabama Environmental Council.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Dr. showers. Ms. McKee, can you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is to pursue grant funding through the Alabama Recycling Fund Grant Program, and it is, as you have mentioned, it is administered through the AIDM, Department of Environmental Management. This is free media opportunities in all these markets of these partners that we're, we're looking at. All these cities will have an opportunity to have educational media spots run about recycling for free with that grant funding. There is no money or no obligation from the City of Huntsville monetarily.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no legal department items or transactions. We're now at non-roster communications from the public. If you'd like to address, Mr. Hennessy, you'll go first, then Ms. Burnett.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Spay Neuter Clinic, I'd like to thank you for passing the resolution this evening. We really appreciate it. And I'd like to introduce the, the Jane Jatuso, who is the chairman of the Spay Neuter Clinic. She's here tonight, and, and I'm thanking you on behalf of everybody that's on the board. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hennessy, before you leave, you'll give your address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Walt Hennessy, 10,002 Hogan Drive, 35803.
Welcome. Ms. Burnett?
Good evening. Yes, I'm Jerry Burnett, and I live at 2405, 2405 Green Hill Drive in Huntsville. Thank you for the, thank you for the privilege of speaking. I want to congratulate the City of Huntsville, the mayor and the city council for working with Remington, working with the state of Alabama to help bring Remington here, which is, I think, a good thing. It creates some jobs. Now I want to ask you to work with the, with the governor and the state legislators to help bring affordable care to the citizens of Alabama. I mean, I know each, each level of government has its own responsibilities, but I think that affordable health care is here and is here to stay. And people in Alabama would benefit from it. You know, some people have their doubts about it, but we know that eventually every state in the nation will have affordable health care. And the sooner that the states come on board, the more benefit it is to the people in Alabama, because folk are dying each day for the lack of medical treatment. And as you look at the statistics, there's a number of citizens living in Alabama, you see them every day, that don't have, cannot afford health care. And with the governor refusing to accept the money that would benefit this city, because the CEO for Huntsville Hospital, I was at a town hall meeting, and he made it clear that the City of Huntsville, the Huntsville Hospital was at risk, and that the money would be a great benefit to the Huntsville Hospital. And so I want to ask the City of Huntsville, the city council, and the mayors to use this influence on the governor to help bring affordable health care to the people of Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else from the public? Ms. Reed?
I'll make it quick. I just want to make an announcement that 9 cent sales tax will start taking effect March 1st, so you better start buying tomorrow, all you can, all you want, because you're going to start paying more on your taxes. Also, I heard at the county commission meeting the other day that there were changes to this Remington, and I think you brought out some of this, but has the fact changed that if 250 employees are hired, they'll be paid $500,000? Is that true? Has any changes made in that? Is that still true? 250 employees for $500,000? Mercy. Who pays that?
Ma'am, you're addressing, addressing myself for the council.
Yeah. But y'all didn't answer my other questions earlier, so I was hoping somebody might answer that.
Okay, the, Ms. Davis will get you all the details, but generally, the, the governments pay for that.
But anyway, I just want to say that 70-something million dollars incentives for 2,000 jobs. I believe in good growth and good economic, and I don't want to get shot over these jobs out here. But when I see the, the incentives that came in to this Remington, New York changed their gun laws about the same time Alabama changed their gun laws. I mean, I've seen this thing's been working quite a while. It's good, maybe. It's good. I mean, I can see good coming out of it. Maybe, hopefully. Anyway, I just wanted to remind everybody. And the ribbon cutting in the morning at 9:30 of the New Jimson High School. So that's something to look forward to. And also, I just want to tell you, on your spending and your big job and big ideas out here, if you read the front page of the papers, there's cuts in defense jobs coming from Washington, so you need to slow down sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? We're adjourned.